I'll call the January 4th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting to order and ask those in the audience who would like to join myself and the council in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening under Special Business is Agenda Bill 7085 swearing-in of council members this evening. RCW 29A dot zero four dot one three three requires elected officials to take the oath of office as the last step of qualification for holding the office to which they were elected. This evening, we're honored to have Judge Scott Stewart, who will conduct the administration of the oath and present certificates of election to those who were recently elected. First of those is Councilmember Jennifer Sutton, who was elected to Council Position Number Two, and she is now joining Judge Stewart at, in the vicinity of the podium.
If I could have you raise your hand, repeat after me. I, Jennifer Sutton, having been duly elected to the office of City of Issaquah, Council Position Number Two, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability. And that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
Sign right. to Position Number Four up to have the oath administered, but unfortunately, Bill was called out of town yesterday in an emergency and is excused this evening. We will administer his oath when he returns. The next person, Paul Winterstein, who was elected to Council Position Number Six, will be joining Judge Stewart at the podium.
Can I ask you to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Paul Winterstein, having been duly elected to the office of City of Issaquah, Council Position Number Six, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability. And that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
and Deputy Council President. Pursuant to Council Resolution 89-1, the election of Council President and Deputy Council President is to take place the first regular meeting of each calendar year. Proper procedure of election of each position is as follows. I will call for nominations for Council President. When all nominations have been made, a motion to close nominations is in order. I will then call for a vote on the motion to call nominations. Councilmembers will then cast votes for nominees by show of hands, and as a reminder, nominees are permitted and encouraged to vote themselves. The nominee receiving the majority vote is declared the new Council President. Following that, we will follow the same procedure for Deputy Council President. And with that, I will call for nominations for Council President. Council President Winterstein.
Yes, I nominate Stacy Goodman for Council President.
Okay, other nominations?
I move that we close nominations for President.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, nominations are closed with Councilmember Stacy Goodman nominated for President. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Stacy Goodman for Council President for 2016, raise your hand. That appears to be, it is unanimous. By your vote then, Councilmember Stacy Goodman is now Council President, Stacy Goodman for 2016. Congratulations, Stacy. I will now call for nominations for Deputy Council President.
I would like to nominate Mary Lou Polly.
Mary Lou Polly has been nominated. Are there any other council?
I would like to move to close nominations for Deputy President.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that carries unanimously. All those in favor of Mary Lou Polly for Deputy Council President signify by raising your hand. By your vote, that was unanimous. Congratulations, Deputy Council President Mary Lou Polly for 2016. That concludes our last item for Special Business. We'll now move to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. Please address your, any comments to the council. It's not a question and answer, period. When recognized, use the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and your relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask the clerk if anyone has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak? Mr. Bishop?
I live at, in Bellevue at 2114 West Lake Simamish Parkway Southeast Bellevue, and I'm here as representing the East Side Transportation Association as the chair-elect of that association and a board member. I'm here to talk to you about Sound Transit III and a letter that I think Sound Transit has asked you to send to them by November, by January 20th. And that's a letter that went to, know the city of Kirkland, and I assume it went to every other city in the, within the Sound Transit District dated December 7th. And in that letter, they are thanking you for your input and asking you to, quote, "Acknowledge the scope elements included in the candidate project reports of interest to you and note if there are scope elements that have been overlooked or included unnecessarily," end of quote. And in order to stay within Sound Transit's process, they'd like to have the letter from you to them acknowledging the scope and that you're okay with the process by January 20th, which is two and a half weeks from now before the January 21st Sound Transit Board meeting, upon which they expect to then take some additional action based upon your comments and comments from every other city in the region. Therefore, you've been given 45 days from December 7th to January 21st to make your decision and act and make a comment to Sound Transit saying, yeah, we like it, yeah, no, we don't like it, whatever. I'm suggesting to you that there are some questions that you should ask the Sound Transit Board before you make any generalized comments about your support or not support of the proposed Sound Transit III. And the first thing is, what I've identified as Item B here, I've already talked about A. It did, well, under A, you're given 45 days now to, over Christmas, to make this comment. In Sound Transit II, it took 36 months to do this process, so you're kind of getting rushed a bit. But B, the subarea equity issue, which is what, the thing that came out of Sound Move in 1996 vote that requires that money collected in the subarea be spent in the subway area, is it a very important issue for the East King County communities, and quite frankly, it hasn't worked very well for us. And the idea here is maybe you could reinforce in your letter to the Sound Transit Board that subarea equity is an important issue. Number C is what would be the tax cost per household in Issaquah if Sound Transit III were to pass? The Kirkland City Manager, Kurt Trippwitz, said that transit taxes, Sound Transit taxes in his community would double if Sound Transit III passes. Kevin Wallace, the deputy mayor of Bellevue, has said that after Sound Transit III passes, it's going to cost the average King County household $1,000 a year forever, every year, $1,000 a year for Sound Transit alone. The question that I'm suggesting that you ask Sound Transit Board to respond to you is like, how much money has your citizens contributed to Sound Transit since 1996, when it was initially passed, to today, that's 19 years, and what have you gotten for it? What's the value that your citizens has received? And secondly, if this were to pass in 2016 at the general election, how much, over the next 30 years, which is, or maybe 35 years, depending upon when they sell the bonds, the taxes are going to have to go to cover the bonds, how much revenue, tax revenue of Sound Transit will the citizens of Issaquah contribute to this program, and what's the response, what's the reflective response or proposed projects that you might get out And then, and not only in terms of the specific projects, but how about some information about, under F, what will be the outcome for Issaquah in terms of like congestion relief? Is $1,000 a year per household from Issaquah to Sound Transit going to create any sound, congestion relief for citizens of Issaquah, or won't it? Maybe they got an idea about that. What about transit ridership? Is it going to be enhanced, or was it going to be degraded? As you know, the current Sound Transit 554 bus.
30 seconds remaining.
30 seconds, okay, thank you. The 554 that goes from Issaquah into downtown Seattle, when Sound Transit II opens up in 2023, that's going to be truncated and redirected into Bellevue and won't go into Seattle. And with a termination, well, let's see, the 554, I think it's going to, going to maybe go as far as the Mercer Island Transit Station, where they'll have to get off the bus and then transfer to the light rail. How is that going to impact the ridership of Transit in your community? And I think those are important questions that you, as a council, could be asking Sound Transit to respond to you before you are, before you give a particularly affirmative letter to Sound Transit Board. And so I suggest you be careful with how you word your letter on January 20th and ask some questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening?
My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I live at 100 Big Bear Place Northwest. I've been in Issaquah, off and on, since 1982, long time person here. I've been involved with human services, and what I would like to bring to the council today is an awareness that both the big city, Seattle, and King County as a whole have declared a state of emergency related to homelessness. Issaquah has supported the idea of regional shelters, and what you probably don't realize is that because the way people have to get to the regional shelters, which are quite distant from us, is transit, that if you have the money for the bus, it takes about an hour and a half to get to the shelter for men. It can take longer to get to the shelter for women and families. It takes about two hours to get to the shelter for teens, and when the teens get there, it's a lottery to get a space. So you're having to gamble a good bit of money on getting a spot and a lot of time. I don't know that Issaquah is going to fund any kind of local shelter, though that would be really nice, but if we had a day center in Issaquah, other than the library, where people could gather, learn about resources, and possibly have a shuttle that would get them to and from the shelters, we might get some benefit out of those shelters. Right now, the usage by people who are homeless in Issaquah is very low because of the difficulty of getting to the shelter. So if we're looking after the needs of our citizens who can no longer afford housing in the community, we need to look at some alternatives that give them access to the things that we're funding, or have something local. That's my plea. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing none then, audience comments are closed, and we will now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Sutton.
I have no report.
Councilmember Polly?
There will be no January Land and Shore meeting. There is some information that will be sent out on the active projects list and some updates that have been done to that software. That will be going to the Land and Shore Committee members for review and to get you to think about questions you might want to ask, and then it will be formally presented at our February meeting. That's the only agenda item that I have now for February, but when I get the rest of the list, I'll mention it at the next meeting. And that's it. There are the reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Services and Safety Committee will be meeting this month, next Tuesday, January 12th, 5:30 in the Eagle Room. The agenda is still to be determined. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will then be meeting on Wednesday, January 13th, at 7:00 PM in Renton City Hall. That agenda is also still being developed. Growth Management Policy Council, the schedule has been set for 2016. The first meeting is going to be Wednesday, March 30th, at 4:00 PM at the PSRC chambers, and the focus is going to be introduction of new members and status report on the conversations with the school districts, an ongoing topic that is important to all the municipalities, certainly in King County. King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, January 12th, busy day, 1:30 to 3:00, and that is actually in a new location. It's going to be held in the Renton Public Works Maintenance Division Conference Room. EMAC has grown to be a large enough committee. We have been shoehorning people into a very small room at the emergency center and is moving to a bigger room. And then finally, the Washington State Emergency Management Council will be meeting this Thursday, January 7th, from 9 till noon at Camp Murray in Tacoma. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
You have a report today?
Thank you. Council President Goodman.
Thank you. That sounds odd. Couple of brief reports. East Side Fire and Rescue Board will meet on January 14th at 4 o'clock at the headquarters at 175 Newport Way. I don't have the agenda yet, but I wanted everybody to know that that's the next meeting. And secondly, related to East Side Fire, it's my understanding that we officially have a new chief for the agency, Jeff Clark, will be starting the 1st of February. So that's very, oh, February 2nd. Don't go expecting to meet him on the 1st, because anyway, that's very exciting, and I would like to take the opportunity to publicly thank interim chief Greg Triumph for all that he's done to make this a smooth transition, just really has been a fantastic member of the team, and I want to thank him for all that he's done.
And former Council President Winterstein.
The Growth Management Planning Board will be meeting this Thursday, December 7th, at 10:00 AM at the PSRC building in Seattle, and among other things on the agenda will be the finalization of the City of Issaquah's status for the Regional Growth Center for our urban core in the central Issaquah area. So I'll be honored to be, in my first meeting, be able to actually participate in the finalization. We currently, it's, there's a interim status it has right now, and so this will be the, after final review and by the PSRC staff, this will be the final, make it a permanent status. So, and that's, I have other things I would say if I was president.
I have a couple of things to say.
You want to?
Go to your order. Go ahead.
Okay, no, I'll talk to you about that.
I've lost control of the meeting.
That concludes my report.
You can say them, you're not going to step on my toes, and if you don't say what I'm going to say, I can say mine later.
I hope everybody turned in their form for identifying the council committees and regional committees that they wanted to be part of, so that Stacy and Mary Lou can start making assignments, so we know who's going to go to the Services and Safety and Land and Shore and Transportation Infrastructure. Thank you for allowing me to make that report.
There will not be an executive session held this evening. Brief, or maybe not so brief, update on the Talis Parcel 9. There has been no significant change to the amount of hillside movement. Currently, four separate geotechnical firms are providing information to the city and the developer for stabilizing the property and determining what measures will need to be taken. This work will take many months and continue well into 2016. Moving forward, work will include ensuring the safety and stability of the site, investigating the cause, working with the developer to determine a permanent stabilization plan. The ongoing analysis includes work to help us better understand the hillside movement and Parcel 9's hydrology. In addition, work is underway to update the critical areas, such as steep slopes on the site. These steps must be completed before a final mitigation, restoration, or construction plan can be determined. This week, the city is meeting with the property owner and developer to begin reviewing the developer's proposed responses to what the additional geotechnical analysis depicts. We expect that there will be several additional meetings over the next few months. A final plan for the property likely will not be determined until the spring. More information is available on our website at issaquawawa.gov/talus. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I'd ask if the accounts payable and payroll dated January the 4th, 2016 have been reviewed?
Yes.
No?
She said yes.
Oh, okay. With that, I would then ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A, accounts payables and payroll, January 4, 2016, seeks approval. Items B through E seeks approval of minutes for the special meetings of November 19th and December 15th, the work session of December 14th, and the City Council Regular Meeting of December 21st. Item F, AB 6963 Old Town Task Force Report seeks referral to council work session. Item G, AB 7094 2014 Maintenance Overlay Project Contract MC 14-1 seeks authorization. Item H, AB 7095 East Lake Simamish Parkway Issaquah Lumber Overhead Power seeks to set a public hearing and referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. AB 7097 2015 Maintenance Overlay Project Contract MC 15-1 seeks authorization. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. I would ask if any council member desires to remove any item from the consent calendar to regular business. Seeing none then, I would ask Council President Goodman.
I would move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 7037, 2015 Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. This is coming back from the Services and Safety This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2016 dash.
01.
I should hope so. Adopting the 2015 Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan and directing the same to be filed with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Councilmember Martz.
So council has seen this bill before. It was directed to go back to committee. And the result of going back to committee was a revision to the document to make it more in line with the requirements associated, sorry, associated with submitting it to the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office and some of the other offices that require this document as a condition for grant application. And the approval by council at the beginning of December, authorizing the potential spending on a consultative implementation of a revision to this document to occur later in 2016, which isn't specifically called out in the motion, but is in the body of the document. So I don't think that staff is necessarily planning on a presentation this evening because this has been seen before. But this, the revisions are consistent with paring things down to the core of what's necessary to document where the city is at currently and facilities that we currently have and levels of service. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
I just had a question. When Councilmember Martz was referring to the allocation of potentially $50,000 to enhance the plan by focusing on a future vision, is that a revision to the, would that be a revision to the plan? Or is that a separate visioning document? Just curious. I, computer is restarting, so I couldn't look at the transmittal letter from Paul.
I can look at it right now, but.
I believe that as a part of the council president's budget memo, he said that program expenditures are contingent upon the council review of the scope of work. So I'm not sure that has actually been determined at this point. And I do recall from some discussions that there was concern around a lack of a vision in the post as it was discussed at a former, previous council meeting.
Right. That does answer my question. Thanks.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Polly.
Just a comment. I really liked Councilmember Martz's summary. I think this document does meet what the RCO is looking for in other agencies. And I'm glad we're getting it in on time so that we qualify for grant cycles. But I have high expectations for 2016 and what we're going to do in terms of a visioning document, whether the process include revising the document we have or coming back with something different. But I think decision makers and citizens need something that, where it's able to easily see what our vision is, where we are, where we want to go, and how we're going to get there. And I think this document, while it meets the state requirements, doesn't quite do that for decision makers and citizens. So I'm not sure where we'll end up. But I'm really excited that the council has agreed to approve money for that and that the staff is working on a plan to come forward with a process for it. So I'm supportive of approving this this evening.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2016-01, adopting the 2015 Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan and providing the same to be filed with the Washington State Recreation Conservation Officer, Office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening? Council President Goodman.
He's not quite used to it yet. Thank you, Paul, for reminding everyone regarding committee assignments. I haven't actually sent any assignments yet. So if you've been busy over the holidays and you don't have your questionnaire filled out and sent in, please do that right away. Secondly, I wanted to remind everybody, and the public as well, that we have a legislative breakfast tomorrow morning at 8:00, Tibbetts Manor. This is an opportunity for us to have a conversation with our local legislators who represent us at the state level. It's a very valuable opportunity, even though this is an off year in terms of budgeting for our state folks. It still is a valuable opportunity, and the public is welcome.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? Councilmember Martz.
I just want to thank outgoing Council President Winterstein for one year as deputy council president and two years as council president, especially his amazing grasp during the budget process and making, we had a couple of really challenging years that were made much more understandable through his efforts. And I'm certainly hoping that even though he's not in an official leadership position, I'll still be turning my head to him when we get to budget season next year. So thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Tola. I'll be sitting next to you banging your elbow.
Council President Goodman.
And I just wanted to follow up. And I had planned on saying something as well. Having worked next to Paul for a couple of years, I can, I'm not sure that it's evident to all the council members or the public how hard Paul has worked for this community. He is incredibly steady and solid and thoughtful, spends an incredible amount of time working on behalf of this community. I have some big shoes to fill. I've, it's rare that I've worked with somebody who's been so thoughtful. And like Tola, I will be turning to Paul for help from time to time and in particular, budget, because I don't have the grasp of those things that you do with the computer that we can move things around and be fluid while we're having discussions. So thank you on my behalf for helping me, helping bring me along. Thank you on behalf of the entire community for your leadership and all that you've provided. And I'm certainly glad that you're here for four more years.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to say I'm glad that Stacy's shoes are smaller than Paul's. It makes it easier for me.
Under good of the order, I'd like to discuss Sound Transit 3. And you heard during audience comments, requirement to provide some comments by actually January 21st. A few words about the ST3 timeline. On December 4th, Sound Transit released the results of the studies conducted on candidate projects being considered for ST3. Board is now narrowing in on a draft ST3 system plan and anticipates releasing a draft around March 2016. We will then be asking the public for input on the draft plan. And that input will help the board shape a final ballot measure for November 2016. And looking at the system plan, eight items are listed as sort of core priorities and things that will be considered on projects that may or may not be included in the system plan. First is completing the spine. And the spine is, for light rail, is from Everett to Seattle to Tacoma and Seattle to Redmond. Ridership is a consideration. Connecting the region's designated centers with high-capacity transit is a consideration. And you heard earlier that our Regional Growth Center in the central part of our central Issaquah plan is one of those centers. It considers socio-economic equity, integration with other transit operations and transit systems, multimodal access, promote transit-supportive land use, and transit-oriented development. And the fact that Issaquah approved the central Issaquah plan a number of years ago is a good example of the wisdom that the city showed in doing that work over a five-and-a-half-year period of time. And then advancing logical next steps, projects beyond the spine within the financial capacity. Again, you may recall that there was a corridor study that was done as a part of ST2 that looked at the corridor between Issaquah-Belview and Kirkland. And that was the first step in many steps as you work towards a light rail project. The board conducted a workshop on November 4th. And then at that time, Sound Transit released the studies or the project templates for projects being considered for the system plan. And that includes building light rail from Totem Lake to Bellevue to Issaquah is one of the projects that we have a template on. These detailed templates are now available online at soundtransit3.org. And we also posted today on our website a direct link to the Issaquah Light Rail template. We've already done some things related to ST2 that I would like to refresh our memories on. In July, on July 7th, we passed Resolution Number 2015-13, which was a resolution supporting light rail and other, some other projects. And that went to Sound Transit. And you'll recall that that letter was signed by six of our serving council members at that time. In addition, you gave me the authority to assign a joint interest statement on July 14th that is a, was a regional approach to what Renton, Bellevue, Kirkland, Issaquah, Samamish, and, maybe that's it. But, oh, you know, a joint interest letter on what we thought we would like to see in ST3. So letters from jurisdictions are due on January 21st. And I have a draft that our staff has been working on with other jurisdictions, Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, Renton, and Bothell, which was not a signature to the other statement of joint interest. That letter is consistent with the resolution that you signed and the letter that council members signed back in July and is consistent with the joint interest statement with two exceptions. One of the exceptions is a project in Renton that they would like to change the location to. And that, that project would move a project that was actually in sound move at Northeast 8th to another, another location on Grady, Grady Way and Rainier Avenue. And they have presented that to Sound Transit. And the working group that put together the draft letter agrees with that move. In addition, the other change is adding a project that's a part of the north subarea that would provide bus rapid transit on 522 to link up with North, North Link at 145th Street Station, which is a part of that project. So that letter is, has been agreed upon by the staffs in all of the jurisdictions. And I wanted to bring that to your attention this evening and ask for your permission to sign that letter. In addition, we're working on the draft Issaquah letter, which should be available in another week or so. And I would like to know whether council members would like to sign on to that letter with me as you did with the original letter to Sound Transit. Well, that's an update on ST3 and where we are this evening. And since policy questions, you know, of this nature informally are brought under good of the order, that's why I wanted to share that information with you. Well, that is an update on where we are this evening. Are there any questions? Oh, great. Is there anything else for good of the order this evening? Well, with that, then, we are adjourned at 7:57. Good work.